All right, a call to order. The Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for Wednesday, March the 8th, at the early time of 5:30 PM. Will we all rise and pay respects to the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A roll call, please.
Wright.
Here.
Curtis.
Here.
Noel.
Here.
Ferrari.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Charles.
Here.
There is a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Charles. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Hearing none. Item five, closed session.
I'll make a motion to be an open session, attorney in motion, and they can all vote. Truth, there's majority needed. And I call it a closed session for five purposes. A, discussion of a confidential legal opinion regarding development agreements pursuant to MCL 15.268H and MCL 15.243L and G. B, discussion of a confidential legal opinion regarding conditional zoning under state law, touch of zoning ordinance pursuant to MCL 15.268H and MCL 15.243L and G. And C, discussion of a confidential legal opinion as of the purchase of real property pursuant to PCL 15.268D.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second from Trustee Noel, but I need a clarification. You said PCL, it should be MCL?
MCL, yeah. Yes, sir. Reason of the motion, you would state who is to be present in the closed session? To include township board members. And Noel, our, 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 David.
Brittany.
You want to be on.
We want Brittany, we want Danielle, we want Megan.
To include, uh...
So many.
Henry Recording Secretary. Who's the Recording Secretary? Our two township attorneys and executive assistant, Daniel Snip.
I have a motion from Treasurer Ferrari and a second from Trustee Noel. Discussion?
It's a quick question. Uh, we have a gentleman here for the school board, should he stay or is that important?
He has to leave.
Okay.
That's fine. Okay, a roll call? Trustee Coleman. Uh, the camera guy has to leave, too.
He will, once the motion is done.
Trustee Coleman.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Forbry, yes. And Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Okay, so now we're moving to closed session. Okay.
Do you want your clerk to say so?
Item number six, Township Board Workshop, Board etiquette and procedural rules. Like I stated previously, Brittany's been watching our board and, and only improvements. We, we, as a board, function fast, fair, friendly. Uh, they're, they're not a roushest board like some communities where they fight amongst themselves. This board is very respectable of each other's time, but there's always room for improvement. So with that, Brittany's made some observations and she's gonna go through them with us.
Yeah. So I'd just start out by saying no one's in trouble. Um, you guys all generally do a great job. A lot of this will be a refresher for you, to be honest, because you are doing things right, um, which is great. My presentation focuses on meeting decorum, which is really governed by two things, your bylaws and then Robert's Rules of Order, so we'll go through that quickly. Um, I also focus on motions, how to pass them, how to amend them. Expertise contact, which is, which is becoming an increasing issue, especially in the digital era. And then, of course, just a refresher of the Open Meetings Act, which is always good for a public board, right? Um, so with that, I can start, always start with a little video to show you why meeting decorum, um, the meeting procedure, procedures matter.
Well, this is loading up, will we have a copy of this?
Yes, um, and I believe that the clerk did send out a copy to everyone. If you don't have it, I can send it to you. And actually, I have copies that I brought, so you guys can take notes. We can skip this part if we can't figure it out. You guys won't be quizzed on your technological savviness today.
Okay, let's just go ahead.
We'll look through this pretty quick, because I want to get you guys in your open session.
Yes.
So go to the next slide.
All right, so these are just my quick tips for a successful public meeting. The most important thing I tell every board is the chair controls the meeting. Um, you guys actually do a great job of this. You're lucky to have a very strong supervisor who, who does a good job of recognizing and giving board members the floor, but also controlling, um, the cadence and the agenda and the tone of the meeting. Um, I always say review your bylaws at least once a year. Make sure you're familiar with them, those govern your meeting procedure. If you're ever in doubt, revert to Robert's Rules of Procedure. Um, we'll get into why you don't have to be perfect on your procedure later in this presentation, so don't put too much pressure on yourself if you ever aren't perfect in line with Robert's rules. And we'll also go over a few quick, um, of the most important rules under that very large 300-page book, which, um, if any of you guys have ever had some extra time in your life, it's a great read. Um, so...
But this board voted, and it wasn't this specific board, but the Township Board voted years and years ago, that we do not operate under Robert's rules.
I have boards that, that do so.
Okay.
And what they usually find is they generally follow a loose version of Robert's rules. You're never gonna, if you're ever in court over a procedural issue, they're never gonna say your motion's overturned because you didn't follow Robert's rules to a T.
Okay.
But boards like it because it keeps your meeting moving, it keeps things in a certain order. But I always, I'd say, adopt a loose version that works for your board.
Okay.
So just know by not following it, you're not breaking the law.
Okay.
So always maintain control and decorum. This is usually the responsibility of the chair, but all members should assist. We'll talk a little bit about that and how to handle public comment when you have unruly, um, members of the public hearing, how to deal with that. Um, follow appropriate procedures for passage of motions and amendments. Um, board members should refrain from commenting during public comment. We'll talk about this a little more, too. But there shouldn't be back and forth during public comment. Your bylaws govern your public comment. Everyone's entitled, members of the public are entitled to see and appear. They get your three minutes under, under your bylaws. Um, board members should not be answering questions at that time. If the board wants to answer those questions, you can write them down, and at the close of public hearing or at another appropriate time during the meeting, you can address those comments. When meetings can really get out of control is when you're having that back and forth with constituents. Maybe they're getting more time than other members of the public. Um, maybe they feel, other members of the public feel, well, you answered their question but not mine. Um, that's why it's really good to treat everyone the same as much as you can. So that's why I say any board or chair response should be after public comment is closed.
Trustee Charles?
So during public comment, basically, there is no feedback from the board? How about from the supervisor?
There generally shouldn't be, no. Um, it's appropriate after you've closed public comment, but the, the biggest thing that you're ever gonna get challenged on in public comment is that you gave more time to the floor, to someone than another person, or you treated someone differently than you treated another person during public comment.
You made a decision that was not on the agenda and you violated the Open Meetings Act?
Generally, I wouldn't say that's a strong basis for an Open Meetings Act violation, but it's not best practice.
Right. Okay.
All right, next slide.
Next slide.
All right, so this is, this is what the Attorney General has said on public comment rules. We don't have a lot of strong case law, because luckily for you, public boards don't get sued a whole lot over public comment. So the types of things that boards and commissions can address through, usually through their bylaws, are the length of time that members of the public may address the board. Again, you set yours at three minutes. Um, designation, designation of the time for public participation during a certain part of the agenda. Public comment takes place when it's on your agenda, not outside of that time period. Um, what you cannot do is place conditions on attendance of members of the public at an open meeting by requiring they provide you with information like their name and address. You can require they give their name for, for public comment, but you can't say you can't attend this meeting because you haven't given us your name and address. It's a violation of the OMA.
So if Brittany's coming up to talk during public comment, I could, if I said, would you state your name and address, what would you say?
Brittany Ellis, 123111 Cliff Drive.
What if you didn't want to give your address?
Then you can say, I can say I'm not gonna give my address, but you can say we require that as our bylaws, as part of our, um, as a requirement for public comment. What you can't do is say, get out of here, you can't attend our meeting.
So we have to review our bylaws to make sure that's in there if we want that in there?
You can allow anonymous comment if you want, that's completely up to the board. So you cannot limit the subject or issues that the speaker wants to address during public comment. You can't prevent a person from talking about a confidential or closed session topic. So if we go into a closed session and they wanna ask the board questions about it, again, you're not required to answer them and you shouldn't be answering them during public comment. Um, but you can't prevent them from asking questions and bringing it up. Um, again, you can't require as a condition of attendance that they register or provide their name or any other information. So this is, I think you're all familiar with this. This board does a great job of, of passage of motions. But, um, as you know, all board members have the right to make motions during a meeting. Anytime no other business is pending, granted, the chair recognizes the member first. The member states the motion, you have to have a second. The members then debate the motion. The chair restates the motion, and that's the time when the members vote. The chair then announces the resolve. This, um, this part, amending a motion, is where boards sometimes get in trouble because they don't realize that they need to actually vote on the amendment of the motion before they move on, um, to vote on the final motion they wanna vote on. So, um, for, to amend a motion, the board member makes the motion. I move to amend the motion on the floor. That also requires a second. After the motion to amend is seconded, a majority vote is needed to decide whether the amendment is accepted, and then a vote is taken on the amended motion. Again, that's after you already took a motion on the first motion that you had on the floor.
They're pretty clear on that one?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, I, I...
Okay, question?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Does the, before the motion, is the, the first, uh, motion unamended? Is passed first and then the amendment is passed or the, and then you pass the amended motion? So three?
So I don't wanna say passed. So you vote on the first motion, usually you're gonna strike it down, because you know you're gonna do an amendment.
Okay.
But what a lot of boards miss is they just, they know from their discussion that they don't like the motion on the floor, so they just skip and go to the, vote on the amended motion. And they miss voting on the original motion on the floor. You always need to vote on the original motion that's before you on the floor, before you place another motion on the floor.
Okay.
I'm gonna redo that, please.
Yes.
So this comes up, we would vote, vote it down in order to add the amendment?
Correct. Unless for some reason there's votes to pass the original motion on the floor, you never know.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, because it, it comes up freewill.
And, and I know our Recording Secretary's been wonderful about letting us know when we break that rule.
Well, may I?
Yes.
A lot of times, there's, I'm just gonna use Joe makes a motion, John seconds it. And then Curtis says, well, I want you to amend your motion to say this. And then you guys get all convoluted.
We need to stop.
What, what Curtis and I have both said is to make it cleaner, vote that first motion down, then start back from scratch. Because when you have amended motions, if you've gone back and read the minutes, you've got a vote on your amendment, then you're voting on the original one, but that vote on the original one is further down in the minutes. It's just cleaner to vote it down.
Vote it down, get rid of it.
Make it one.
Yes, Trustee Noel.
Why don't I ask Danielle to open that door, because I think we have a coalition.
Yes, you can ask.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
Okay, so this is the good news. Anytime you have a motion, generally, if you're ever challenged on a motion, it's over the interpretation of the motion, it's not over the procedure. So if you have a motion that's passed in violation of the township's adopted procedures, it's likely to be upheld by court. You're not likely to have a motion overturned because you screwed up your procedure and you didn't, you put eight amendments up and you didn't have any of them. Um, they'll look at the intent of the motion. So that's why I always stress writing really clear, strong motions, expressing the intent of the board, because what doesn't go into the court record is the whole discussion the board had about the motion. We'll be arguing over just the language of the motion. So all, everything you're proving needs to be in that motion.
Uh, Treasurer Ferrari, didn't I agree, Joe Ardenly? One of my things of always sense, our job as any board, we're leaving a legacy. Nothing is tougher than when you look at three minutes and say, I make a motion, have Joe do this. Who's Joe and what's this? You know, our job as a board is so, they can always, a future board can choose to redo it. At least they'll know what we had in mind.
Make your attorney's life easier, too, when I have to go defend who Joe is and why he did it, so...
Okay, any questions? Moving on.
All right, so now we're getting into an open meeting. The intent of the Act is to strengthen the right of all Michigan citizens to know what goes on in government by requiring public bodies to conduct nearly all business at open meetings. We want to be open and transparent government, right? We want the public to know what we're doing, we want to do the right thing. That's the intent of the Open Meetings Act.
Any questions? Thank you.
All right, so this is when a meeting is subject to the Open, Open Meetings Act. So anytime a public body, this includes a committee, a subcommittee, meets with a quorum present to deliberate or render a decision on something on which a vote by the public body is required and by which a public body effectuates or formulates public policy. The OMA defines decisions to mean a determination, action, vote, or disposition upon a motion, proposal, recommendation, resolution, order, ordinance, bill, or measure on which a vote by members of a public body is required and by which a public body effectuates or formulates public policy. All that means is, don't have a majority of, a majority of your board who is, um, empowered to make decisions, making, having discussions towards a decision on an item they're gonna take a vote on outside of a public meeting.
Okay. Curtis, Jack, and Joe are sitting in the office, John walks in, and we make a decision. What are we doing?
Violating the Open Meetings Act.
If I call John and ask him a question about a meeting, not to make a decision on it, am I violating?
Absolutely not.
If we all meet at 9:25 legacy and it's a open house, are we violating an Open Meetings Act by us all being in the same room?
As long as you're not talking about township business that you're gonna be voting on, no.
The reason for an Open Meetings Act is not to discuss and make decisions behind the public's back. Yeah, uh, let me get Trustee Charles first, go ahead.
Going back to this, uh, the OMA and, uh, Jack's example. So if we have a committee meeting, for example, and somebody wants to observe, can they observe as a member of the public without being part of the discussion?
Yes.
Okay, and if, can they be part of the discussion without voting? I'm explaining here a little bit.
Let me back up. You're asking if a board member can be part of the discussion without voting when you... I would say, actually, I, let me back up. Anytime you have a quorum present for a subcommittee and you haven't noticed it as a public meeting, I think that you're on shaky grounds.
You're on shaky ground, meaning we're not really sure, okay.
Meaning that don't do it.
So she says shaky ground, don't go there.
I tried to pull an attorney to the, to the...
We try to do that all the time, because, like, for example, the ARPA committee meets and there's three members of the team, and all of a sudden, a fourth walks in and says, I want this. Well, that's a violation of the Open Meetings Act. And that's what we're trying to prevent. We do a good job of preventing that. Joe, you had a...
Oh, we've got, like, we have safety net. There's three board members on there. We, we need to ask, input from Supervisor Curtis. One of us steps up, that's still okay, correct?
That's okay, and Supervisor Curtis is up, would also be empowered to, you know, put forth what his position is on an issue before that subcommittee, but not here to deliberate, yes.
But then when he leaves, a third member can come back in.
Yes.
Okay, that's how we do without.
Yes, sir.
Just so I get in my, because I had a meeting, so we have, kind of, the laws, like, with the DDA board. So we have a committee meeting, and one of the board members wants to join, in which case, then it becomes a quorum. That person can observe but can't participate. Is that a good interpretation without being on shaky grounds?
So I would need to know the facts, I'd need to know...
Well, if, if, if a, if a fourth person attends, that creates a quorum. Are they allowed to talk or just watch?
They can observe the meeting. Um, I wouldn't recommend that they, I deliberately discussed with the board any sort of matter that they're gonna vote on.
Okay, that's what I wanted to, thank you, that's...
Any other questions? Next.
But I wouldn't recommend doing it, just, it's just better, you know...
No, because like I said, it's coming up pretty soon, and I'm, we're meeting someone, and I wanna make sure we follow these rules.
You know, I definitely advise being conscientious and conservative when it comes to Open Meetings Act and not placing yourself in a position where you have four board members in the, in the room and you could be accused of an Open Meetings Act violation.
We have 11 minutes left. Trustee Noel.
We have ORC meetings. We cover large blocks of data. We have a person that is an alternate. The alternate comes in, keep abreast, to make decisions at the next meeting that it may be a part of. Can that person sit in the meeting and not say anything?
So is that alternate a member of your township board?
Plan, uh, Planning Commissioner, be a Planning Commissioner.
We have a quorum of the Planning Commission.
That would be a quorum of the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
They can read the minutes.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions, moving on?
I think we missed one. So this has to do with expert contact. What that means is, um, making decisions outside of township, public township board meetings. I mean, the reason why we have the Open Meetings Act, the reason why we have notice requirements under the Michigan Zone Enabling Act, the Clean Meat Enabling Act, and the Charter Township Act, um, is to notice the public of what the township board will be meeting on, um, and to allow them to be able to attend and comment and participate in our public discourse. So that's why expert contact is generally frowned upon. Where we're seeing this more and more, which I just wanna touch on briefly, is, um, social media, and this board does not have this issue, but improper social media contact, where there may be a quorum of, um, board members discussing something on Facebook, the public's weighing in, you violate the Open Meetings Act because now you're excluding certain member, certain sectors of the public, i.e. those who aren't privy to that Facebook discussion to participate. You're excluding your fellow board members from participating. Um, if that ever happens, the, the correct way, the way to correct it, the best way to remedy it is to disclose improper contact to your board and disclose it in a public meeting so that everyone's aware of what information is out there when deliberating towards a decision.
This is when you're on Facebook, social media, Twitter, and all this, and you chime in with an opinion about how something should be done, and all of a sudden, another member's out there chimes in? You don't know if all those members are creating a quorum. And I, what, what we've always said is, stay off of it, you know? Don't give your opinion. You, you wanna, you wanna jump up there and strangle somebody sometimes for things they say and do, but the best thing to do is talk about it in an open reading.
I agree with all. All right, so now I just wanna talk a little bit about closed session. Um, there are times where it's appropriate to go into a closed session for a board to discuss certain matters. Those matters are prescribed by statute. Um, those reasons are to consider the dismissal, suspension, or disciplining of, or to hear complaints or charges brought against, or to consider a periodic personnel evaluation of a public officer, employee, or staff member, but only if the named person requests a closed hearing. That means the township board cannot request a closed hearing, it has to be requested by that person. Um, they can enter for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement. Um, they can, to consider a purchase or lease of real property up to the time, up to the time an option to purchase or lease that real property is obtained, um, to consult with your attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with specific pending litigation, to review and consider the content, contents of an application for employment or appointment to a public office if the candidate requests that application remain confidential. And finally, the most common reason boards usually go into closed session, this is actually given to you under the Freedom of Information Act, not the Open Meetings Act, but to discuss a written legal opinion or memorandum with the township attorney to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute. So you cannot go in closed session for any other reason. These are the reasons you can go in closed.
Any questions? Next.
So I just wanna talk about procedures to go in a closed session. You can't have a closed session separate from an open meeting. Always has to be part of your open meeting agenda. You need two-thirds roll call vote, which we discussed today. Um, you need to state the purpose or purposes for calling the closed session. I always recommend actually citing the law under which we're going into closed session. Um, motion should always be made on the closed session with a majority vote needed for approval to go into the open session. And then when the board has concluded its closed session, the open meeting minutes should save the time before the body recomplete an open session. And any votes on matters, this is the biggest one. Any votes on matters discussed in the closed session must occur in an open meeting. I.e., you cannot pass motions in closed session.
Any questions? Next slide.
Okay, so this is my final slide that I close with. Use of email or other electronic communications during an open meeting. Basically, the gist of this is, don't email each other in an open meeting about matters on the agenda, or text each other, or instant message each other. Um, talk about it in open. Um, otherwise, you could be, have a violation of the Open Meetings Act. And that's it.
And that's it. Are there any questions for Attorney Ellis? Seeing none, thank you very much, Brittany.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along. Thank you for the Township Board Workshop. Item number seven, approval of the consent agenda.
Treasurer Ferrari, I move to approve the consent agenda to include approval of the regular township board meeting minutes, February 8th, 2023, approval of the regular bills to March 3rd, 2023, approval of the consultant bills to March 3rd, 2023, approval of committee representative votes for March 8th, 2023, approval of the development agreement with Great Lakes Tackle LLC, authorized supervised execution, and approval of grant formation of T V report.
Second. Does everybody understand what was left off the consent agenda? Any questions? Seeing none, roll call. Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Yes.
No. Quick, no. And, Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Okay, we will address the other three in the consent agenda motion at the items left off.
Can I ask for a brief attention that you're speaking in your mic? Thank you.
Uh, those three items were removed from the consent agenda. We'll be addressing them at item 14. Okay, um...
Joe, let me take care of that. I move to approve the consent agenda to include approval of development agreement with Reconcile Wellness and Authorized Supervised Execution, approval of the development agreement with Lipid Industrial Partners II LLC, authorized supervised execution, approval of the development agreement with Curative LLC, We Should Bateman LLC and Authorized Supervisor, execute the same.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Uh, yes, Trustee Coleman.
This is, this is a new motion to add to the last agenda.
Right, we're doing number 14 of, of number...
Well, I don't think that's really happened. He's just making a second motion under approval of the consent agenda.
Okay, roll call. Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
No.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Forbry, yes, and, Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Okay, we have no items for removal. Number eight, public comments on items that are not on the agenda. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda? Step up, state your name, please. You have three minutes to speak, and we will listen.
Good evening, Mary Ann Kane, the resident of the Sony Lake Village Condos here in Warstone, asks for township. And I'd like to, um, follow up on an item from 2022. I was here speaking before you about the, uh, Lepire Road traffic study. It was approved by the Board of Township and the funds associated. Uh, for the expense of doing that was approved. And I had not heard anything on follow-up, whether that traffic study has indeed been completed or, um, if it's going to be done this year and at what timeframe, and when will the results be published? My concern at that time, I was president of the Sony Lake Village Condo Association, and at that time, I had three concerns for the traffic study. One was the reduction of the speed from Ray Road on Lepire Road from fifty-five, which is, it is currently down to forty. And so then it could transition and reduce down to thirty at the village limit. So instead of now being fifty-five, then down to forty by Coney, and then down to thirty at the village limit. The second, uh, issue I had was at the Marford Street. Uh, traffic light, uh, in fact, could be turned into a left turn capability for both the east side and the west side. There is room to put a left turn lane on both sides. It would allow some traffic reduction on Stone Lake Drive because people who want to go to fire and to the high school would have left turn capability at that traffic light. And thirdly, it was to kind of beef up, if you will, uh, the turnaround, uh, in front of the Leo's Coney Island little strip mall there, uh, especially in the winter months when, uh, snow is built up there. That turnaround is very dangerous for someone wanting to come out from Lepire, from the Stone, um, Leo's Coney Island to make a left, travel north on Lepire. Uh, heaven forbid if, if the car you feel is going to move forward, and it doesn't, and you're stuck in traffic there. So, uh, those were the three concerns I had about the traffic study. There was also another resident of Oxford Township. She had, uh, responded in correspondence along with the traffic study, and her concerns were by Drainer. So it was supposed to go from Ray Road all the way to Drainer, uh, on Lepire Road. But I can't, um, address her concerns. Um, you would have that correspondence on file. So I just wanted to bring that up because I wasn't sure if that study had been done, and if so, what the results were, and if not, when can we see that being done here in 2023 as we approach the spring? Uh, hopefully, we're going to approach the spring, uh, season very soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members of the, uh, uh, board that are public would like to speak at this time on items not on the agenda? Seeing none? Uh, item number nine, first reading. Pardon me?
Sir, somebody just, I thought he was getting out of his mind.
False alarm?
False alarm.
Okay, thank you. Item nine A, first reading zoning ordinance, sixty-seven A dot zero three zero text amendments. Uh, John, did you want to address any of this for us, please?
This is a very large package. I'll do my best. If I need some help, I'll look at Megan, but there are four major areas that we've worked on. Uh, on page eighty-eight in this is the development agreements for the medical part of, uh, and then there's two, uh, section, page two eighty is the P U D for the commercials. That's where you saw all the matrixes. On page two fifty-nine in the article, there was regards to home occupancy. And then, uh, on one of the pages, of page two sixty-one, we talked about addresses when we're redoing home addresses, when we, we are redoing, uh, homes for, when we get the building.
Okay. Any questions, board members? Treasurer Ferrari?
I move to send a second reading and possible adoption of amendments to the Charter Township of Oxford's zoning ordinance, sixty-seven A, if we consider it the Charter Township of Oxford, or trustee's April twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Colvin. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Uh, roll call. Treasurer Charles?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Treasurer Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Colvin?
Yes.
Treasurer Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Farrar?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Item ten A. Chief Majestic, you want to come up and tell us what ten A is about?
Good evening, board. Yes. Uh, as you know from the packet, uh, we have found a, uh, what we believe a well-qualified candidate to fill the position of assistant chief. And I respectfully request your acceptance of this, uh, candidate for the position.
Are there any questions of the chief? Yes, Treasurer Ferrari.
Chris, do you have some changes to be agreed?
That's the counter. That's, uh, next. Any questions? Roll call?
Yeah.
You need the motion first.
I've asked about the contract.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Chris, do you have some changes in here?
Yeah, the, uh, Chief Majestic and I had some conversation along with Supervisor Curtis and the changes have been made and forwarded to you in the email yesterday. So you do have an updated agreement to the board.
The bulk of the changes made were, uh, we found typographical errors, um, and just some, just some grammatical, actually more than anything. Uh, but there was no change of content to the, to what you had already received.
I move to approve the employment agreement between Randy Besford, the Charter Township of Oxford, to be employed as a full-time assistant chief by Oxford Fire Department as presented. Further, Chief Matthew Majestic, Supervisor Jack Curtis, authorized assignment employment agreement between Randy Besford, Charter Township of Oxford.
Okay.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Payne. Are there any questions? Uh, before we vote on this, right after this vote, we're going to have to take a few minutes and get a few pictures because, uh, it, it takes a while. I want to get the ladies and the gentlemen back to work in the back of the room.
Me too.
All right. Roll call. Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Farrar?
Yes.
Treasurer Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Charles?
Yes.
And Treasurer Colvin?
Yes.
Motion's passed. Item ten B, swearing in of Assistant Fire Chief Randy Besford. I don't know how you want to do this. I make a terrible background.
Besides the bus, you're not the witness, see?
Take that.
Ask your right hand, repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Randy Besford.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will
support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Assistant Fire Chief.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Assistant Fire Chief.
In and for the Township of Oxford, County of Oakland, according to the best of my ability. In and, in and for the Township of Oxford.
In and for the Township of Oxford.
County of Oakland.
County of Oakland.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I know what we do is, we want to get a few pictures. We have Darren and CJ. Uh, I don't know who else to come up and get their picture, but if anybody needs a break, now's the best time to get it done. We'll take ten minutes and get this handled. The recess. Thank you, Mark. Thank you.
Yeah.
Everybody's here? Uh, item eleven. Hold me.
I'll slide it.
All right, thank you. Item eleven, Sharp Engineering Report. It was in our packet. Is there any questions for Engineer Sharp? We'll have you come up. Was here. Seeing none. Uh, item twelve, unfinished business. American Rescue Plan Act update and recommendations. Clerk Wright?
Yes, we, we met on the, sort of, twenty-second of February. That's on our last meeting. And we discussed a lot of issues. As you recall, we narrowed down the list at this meeting to five items from that. As we reduced it any further because from our water sewer committee, we decided that we might have to paint fire items. So that's been removed from the list. But, uh, it is a bull pointed items. Uh, we're active on the, on the list as well. Keep it a good idea. Uh, our committee is going to recommend the board approve $25,000 of ARCA funding for cemetery improvements, which includes, uh, the wall restorations as sorely needed. Mount Pleasant Cemetery, we're looking to put a new sign up, and then also do some further tree removals in the actual cemetery. So we get that approval, we'll proceed on to get those items completed, depending on what the cost from that cat. Um, also the fire radials, they were approved and paid for by the fire department, um, through the ARCA funding, has been completed. So what the committee is recommending also is that the remaining funds, as you see there, $1,405.50, we move down to the fire station number three project. The reason for that is later on in the agenda, there's a bidding for a well placed at fire station number three. And if those funds are approved, there'll be enough ARCA funding to pay for that well considering one of the two gold bids are approved. Previously mentioned the fire harder painting. Um, walking to Oxford Science wasn't on the list, but still is. We didn't discuss it because we didn't have a formal sign committee from the board to proceed on. So until that happens, we're going to just leave that on the list and wait to see if the township board wants to approve the committee for science at a future meeting. Um, we're, uh, we're anticipating recommendations from the capital improvement committee. And as you see in your report packet tonight, there is a recommendation from the capital improvement committee, but it's not necessarily for ARCA funding as of right now. We're recommending fire generators, as we discussed at the meeting last month. And then, as I indicated as well, maybe a little bit for the wells, a little over $41,000 between the two bids. Um, if that's approved, then one of the two of those can be funded through ARCA for so chooses. We also received two proposals from the, uh, Oxford Township Library. Uh, one was for generators, I believe, and the other one was for putting, uh, I guess I'll call it pocket libraries in certain areas of the township. Those were received after we met. So we have not, uh, considered those items as of today. So the committee, the next time we meet those, will put that on, on consideration with no guarantees. Uh, also, there's a breakdown in the funding. Uh, as of this being, there's $923,364.94 remaining in the ARCA funds because we have not recommended allocation for a few months. So with that, um, I'll make a motion to allocate $25,000 to American Rescue Plan Act funds for cemetery maintenance improvements for the purpose of tree removal, wall restoration, and installing a new sign at Mount Pleasant Cemetery, and to assign the remaining $10,405.50 of American Rescue Plan Act funds for fire radials to the fire station number three project.
I'll second that. Yeah, a motion by Clerk Wright. I have a second by trustee Charles. Are there any questions? Clerk Wright?
I don't know if, uh, trustee Payne or trustee Noel have any further comment? I don't think anyone else has.
Other questions? Roll call. Treasurer Colvin?
Yes.
Treasurer Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Farrar?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Charles?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Okay, item twelve. Single waste holler update, trustee Noel. Thank you. Lord, in your package, you'll see a, a letter that discusses this. The committee consists of myself, Marty Payne, and Clerk Wright. We're currently working with three companies that have responded to our RFP, GFL, Party Waste and Waste Management. We have a confidential proposal review meeting coming up tomorrow, uh, Friday to discuss the details of this proposal. The next board meeting on, uh, April twelfth is where we'll be discussing, uh, uh, the plan. We're also working on a one-page flyer to go out, and we're also working with the, uh, inordinants, uh, with legal in regards to managing this within the township. Any questions, uh, seeing that holler? We're going to say it three times. Our next board meeting will be April twelfth, and that's going to be held at the Lake Point Church on Drainer Road because we do anticipate a few more people than what we can fit in this room. So any questions about, uh, the single waste holler and what it'll consist of? Uh, we could have that open meeting there with all the residents that we anticipate. Okay? Thank you, John. Item twelve, uh, C, Paint Lake Canal Assessment District Request, Resolution Number One. Clerk Wright?
This is a special assessment district for Paint Lake. It's formerly known as Swale Lake, but that, that's been changed. And, and what it is, it's a twenty, uh, parcel S A D to eradicate or suppress, uh, weed, aquatic weeds in the Paint Lake Canal. I'll hold a picture for you here to give you an idea of what the, what the area looks like. But we've had, uh, Engineer Sharp review the proposal. It meets requirements in his opinion of the minimum land requirements. Here's a picture of what the S A D will, will look like to eradicate the weeds inside the line here. Proposal now is to, uh, assess the properties based on front footage. So there, there's what the, uh, proposal or the S A D will be for these properties. This is the second step in a four, four-meeting process. Uh, the expected approval date that goes all the way through will be the June meeting. We have to have two public hearings on it. We have to send letters to the residents. And we have to prove four resolutions in that process. Um, there's a contract that, uh, the township has to sign on that. S A D as well, and clear, aqua weed, which is the, uh, ten-year S A D proposed. There's the annual fees that are going to be charged against the properties based upon front footage. So, if there's any further questions, feel free to ask.
Go ahead, trustee Charles.
The belief, just, I believe there's a change to state legislation. You could also do it by parcel, the proposed by footage, not, not that it interferes with this. Just, just as in FYI.
Wait for that, Kenny.
Well, it gives you a choice, you know, footage or by parcel. That was, I think, last, uh, end of summer, I believe.
Treasurer Ferrari, I move to approve the resolution of tentative declaration of intention to implement an aquatic weed control special assessment district program for Paint Lake Canal. Supervisor Jack Curtis authorized assignment of Paint Lake Canal special assessment district agreement for aquatic weed control on behalf of the Charter Township of Oxford. I've scheduled a public hearing with the Oxford Township Board Trustees' regular meeting on Wednesday, April twelfth, 2023, at six thirty P M. Pursued thereafter. Hear and consider any objections submitted by any interested persons with respect to the Paint, Paint Lake Canal Special Assessment District petition, the Special Assessment District program, the assessing of the cost thereof to the Special Assessment District.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Clerk Wright. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Roll call.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Farrar?
Yes.
Treasurer Noel?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Treasurer Charles?
Yes.
Treasurer Colvin?
Yes.
And Treasurer Payne?
Yes.
Okay, a motion carried. Thirteen A, new business. Traditional rezoning of parcel zero four dash two one dash two zero zero dash zero zero two and parcel zero four dash two one dash two zero zero dash zero zero five. Um, how do we want to address this? Uh, Brittany, do you want to come on up and
Sure.
inform us of what, uh, our findings are?
So as the board knows, we received new conditions from the developer. Offered under rezoning ordinance, the appropriate procedure is for the board to send those conditions to the planning commission to make a recommendation on the new conditions, um, before it comes back to the board for consideration.
Treasurer Ferrari, I move to refer the conditional zoning application application requesting a rezone from C one Local Commercial, Darren Multiple Family, uh, for parcel numbers oh four twenty-one, two hundred zero zero two, oh four twenty-one, two hundred zero zero five, back to the Oxford Township Planning Commission, a recommendation of approval or denial to the township board on the conditional rezoning.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Noel. Roll call? Oh, I'm sorry. See your hand.
Be me to punch again. Uh, does this open up everything to the planning commission or just adding or approving these new conditions? Does it start with clean slate?
So, go ahead, Supervisor.
Go ahead.
The planning commission can make a recommendation on the other conditions as well that have already been offered, but there have been additional conditions offered which they will weigh in on.
But can they just start from scratch?
They can, they can pass a new motion, yes, to make a recommendation of approval or denial to the board of trustees.
Okay. Roll call? Treasurer Colvin?
Yes.
Treasurer Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Farrar?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
And Treasurer Charles?
Yes.
Okay, item thirteen B, Safety Path Master Plan Approval. Treasurer Ferrari, I'm going to read this to Safety Path Committee to, we want to revise our, our project master plan list. You take a look, uh, at, right in front of you are our different priorities. Uh, we've kind of opened on the thirteen different segments. Any questions, board members? Any questions, board members? I have one. Even though these are our priorities, we will still do some that can be done where your easements are ascertained. Is that just waiting for priority number one?
No, this is our best-case scenario.
Okay. But if the easements are gotten and there's a piece you can do, we're going to move it, move forward rather than moving forward?
The committee will take a look at that.
Clerk Wright, one other item that was added to this, to this master plan that wasn't before is you'll see proposed safety paths. So the committee opened up the safety path construction to a majority of the township areas, so that if there's a development, let's go and say in the northern of the township, it compels the township either to accept cash and we will or require the safety path to go in. So it just broadened the requirements of development. Do we need a, I'm sorry, Trustee Payne?
I would say, in regards to you asking if we are going to do the ones that we can do, there are some that don't make sense to do at this point, so we wouldn't, you know, I mean, just because at the end of the time, we have to get the easement, doesn't mean we're going to. I mean, the one on Lakeville Road has Holly and Trail right across the street, so it's less reasonable to do that one versus others. And the one on Marrow Road, it's got nothing connecting it.
Your members of the committee? Go ahead, Clerk Wright.
Just also, just comes to my mind, priority number five, which is right in front of Meyer. Treasurer Ferrari was instrumental in, I believe, getting that easement secured for Meyer today. So with that, once the, once the safety path is completed on Ray Road, and we're going to probably work on getting, getting an easement from Chase Bank, that will complete that loop from Oxford over to Ray Road back into the village. So that's what we're working on as well, the, the back, so it's a big, major step right now.
Any other questions?
Treasurer Ferrari, I move to approve the Charter Township of Oxford Safety Path Master Plan and revise priority listing for the Oxford Township Safety Path System, as recommended by the Safety Path Committee. Authorize Sharp Engineering to create two twenty-four-by-thirty-six fullback master plan maps and twenty-eleven-by-seventeen maps. The cost of the maps to be expensed to account number two-nine-seven-eight-five-two-eight-two-one point zero-zero-zero, safety path fund engineering fees.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Any questions? Roll call?
Treasurer Ferrari, yes. Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Curtis?
No.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
And Trustee Coleman?
Okay, motion carried. Thirteen C, Confirmation of Fire Alarm Replacement Cost for Township Building. Board members of the last meeting, I informed you that we had a condition with our fire panel. We've had it for the past nine years, and currently we had to act and replace our fire alarm system. I had an estimate of fourteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents, and that's what the estimate came in, and the work was done for that money. So I move to approve the estimate dated February tenth, two thousand and twenty-three from Thumb Alarm Systems Incorporated in the amount of fourteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents. This fourteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents amount to be expensed to account one-zero-one dash two-six-five dash nine-six-seven-six dot zero-zero-zero additions and improvements. Second. Yeah, a motion by Supervisor Curtis. I'm going to give that second to Trustee Charles. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call?
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari, yes. Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
And Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Okay.
You get an easy one.
Yeah. Item thirteen D, Resolution Approving the Public Transit Agreement Between Oakland County and North Oakland Transportation Authority. We have members from NOTA and members from the county. If you'd like to come up to the podium and explain what we're doing? Haven't heard from Lynn in a while.
Good evening, everyone. Lynn Kramowski, Director of NOTA. And the contract that you have in front of you is between NOTA, it's a transit agreement between NOTA and Oakland County, and it's due to the transit millage that passed last November of twenty twenty-two. It was a point nine-five mills for ten years, and it replaced the pre-existing NOTA millage of point two-five. The contract that you have is a three-year agreement with a one-year funding mechanism, where the Oakland County will pay NOTA two million, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and five dollars for one year to maintain our existing services. We currently had seventeen routes that NOTA was running. This also will pay for three additional routes for NOTA, just NOTA only, so we'll go to twenty routes. And then it also is three expansion routes, and those expansion routes will go into Brandon Township, potentially in Independence is what we're thinking of, although that's still to be determined. Those are the areas they're looking at. It will also pay for our parking lot to be redone as well, so we need an expansion of our parking lot. And I'm here for any questions.
Okay. With Lynn is our old friend, Mr. Razigan. Just wanted to come up in case there's any question. You have anything to add to that?
No.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Then this makes you whole, correct?
Yeah.
There's no cuts or no lack of employees or services, nothing?
No, no, and actually, we actually increased our wages for all of our drivers so that we're consistent. The four providers the county named in the ballot was NOTA, WOTA, which is the last Oakland Transit, OPC, which is Rochester, Rochester Hills, and SMART. So those are the four providers. And they really wanted, it's been great working with the county. They really want to make sure that we are equitable between the, especially the three smaller providers, that we're, we have a decent wage and we have good benefits. So we've raised our driver wages up to twenty dollars an hour from sixteen and fifty roughly, and offering benefits packages, so that's included in that as well.
Trustee Charles?
So it's a three-year contract, but a one-year guarantee?
Right.
What sense does that make?
I think it's a first year. They're not sure what's going to happen. This also doesn't include vehicles to be purchased, which are on order. They ordered ten vehicles, like, which isn't going to come until the end of summer, but I think they want to see how this plays out and then make adjustments in the budget as we go forward. They're foreseeing they have an adjustment in the budget maybe halfway through, and then we'll have to, you know, as we have actual data coming in from the providers to see what the expenses are, as we provide that information, I assume it will take that and then we'll build the budget for next year. Do you have anything to add to that?
Just the bus purchases. We think probably mid-year we'll amend the budget to contribute more money to purchases, to vehicle purchases.
Sir, I still don't, so, but here again, it's a one-year or three-year contract, but one-year budget? I don't.
Yeah, we started with a one-year contract, one-year budget, and in discussions with the attorneys representing the agencies, we understood that that was too confining. The contract was extended to three years with the one-year funding element, and we review that annually, the scope of services and the funding.
Clerk Wright? Yeah, the existing NOTA contract, will that stay in place between the NOTA and NOTA municipalities? Does that have to be renewed?
The intergovernmental agreement, is that what you mean, between the communities that will still stay in place? And everything will stay the same, so there will be no changes. It's part of the resolution. They may, it, we put it in there that there will be no changes to the NOTA board. If we were to make expansion into other areas, it won't change our makeup of the NOTA board. It'll stay the same.
No, one of them, I was trying to find it in here, I don't think it did, but I thought I read it here that you have to provide an audit report every quarter?
It is, it's the SMART report that we provide to SMART anyways, and so it's not an actual audit. They actually changed that. It was actually just a quarterly financial report that we have to provide to SMART, and then just the annual audit.
Treasurer Ferrari?
I move to approve the resol- I move to approve the resolution to approve the public transportation agreement between the Chair of Township of Oxford, Village of Oxford, Chair of Township of Orion, the Village of Lake Orion, Township of Addison, Village of Lunder, North Oakland Transportation Authority, and Oakland County for determining conditions that set forth at their end, and authorize the township supervisor, executive director of the North Oakland Transportation Authority to execute same.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel for discussion, because I saw Trustee Payne's hand go up.
Oh, I was just going to make a clarification, or just make a statement. This, this also says that we get to, that six communities maintain ownership of their current assets. Is that correct?
Yeah.
We don't answer shit.
We do not.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
And Trustee Charles?
No.
Okay. Motion carried. When you need that signed, I know you have another community.
Next Monday, the Village of Lake Orion.
I'll leave it on my desk. Am I going to do it now, or?
I don't have it with me.
Just hold me off.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Item thirteen, thirteen E, Credit Card Policy. Board members, it was a while back, Clerk Wright and I whipped this credit card policy, and we kind of found out that, I just want to show you the redlined copy of the credit card policy. There's four pages, and we had more red than we had black. We brought it up to date. This new credit card policy ensures that safekeeping and or recordkeeping of the policy are forthwith and brought in front of everybody as they become employees or need to use the credit cards. I look for a motion?
I move to approve the resolution without the Charter of Township of Oxford Credit Card Policy. Authorize the township clerk to certify and file the same.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. I saw a hand go up for discussion. No question?
Nope.
Roll call?
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari, yes. Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Item thirteen F, Board members, yearly, we come around and we talk about chloriding our roads. This year, in front of you, you'll see the contract with the Road Commission of Oakland County. We're asking for five applications, but we have a caveat in there, just like Mr. Charles talked about, some legis- legislation. In the program, we may not, this may be less, because we are, we may be relegated to keeping a hundred foot away from surface water and/or four applications per year. So we're asking for five, but it may go down. Are there, anybody have any questions? For the motion?
I move that the Charter of Township of Oxford, contract with the Road Commission of Oakland County, to provide chloride services for twenty twenty-three on all public gravel roads of the Charter of Township of Oxford. Chloride cost should be paid a hundred percent by the Charter of Township of Oxford for five applications at a rate of seven dollar twenty-nine cents, point zero, point zero-seven-two-nine per foot per application. Cost for chloride service to be expensed to road fund account, two oh-four, four four-zero, nine six nine, point zero-zero-zero, highway road maintenance contracts.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Coleman. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call?
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
We'll get through these. Item thirteen G, Fire Station Number Three Well Bids. Trustee Noel, we went up for bids to further our expansion of that property north of town for Fire Station Number Three. The committee consists of Chief Majestic, Mr. Sharp Engineering, and myself. We've got our bids back in, the two low bids, once we adjusted to make them alike bids, Ed Burke Meyer, well drilling, came in at forty-one thousand, seven ninety-four. I move that we award the Oxford Fire Station Number Three Fire Protection Well Bid to Ed Burke Meyer, well drilling, at a base bid of forty-one thousand, seven ninety-four. This forty-one thousand, seven ninety-four amounts to be paid from the American Rescue Plan Fund. Second. I have a motion by Trustee Noel, a second by Treasurer Ferrari. Questions? Seeing none, roll call?
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
And Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Item thirteen I. We have Lieutenant Patterson back there, should he need any backup? But item I is a substation interview room upgrade quotation approval.
What did I do on H?
Ah. Item H, Approval of Request for Proposed Cemetery Wall Reconstruction. And I'll get to the next one next. Board members in front of you, several walls located in the Oxford Cemetery north side are in need of repairs, indifference varying of degrees. The cemetery committee is requesting approval to begin the reconstruction process. What the cemetery committee did was they listed by picture each wall in the cemetery that's crumbling or falling apart, and Curtis has the pictures if you'd like to see them. We put them in a priority listing of A, B, and C. And what we're doing tonight is asking our engineer Sharp to go out for some proposals for wall construction. Taking them all into consideration would give us the possibility of doing some this year as required. Some are falling down. They're really bad, and some just would be nice if we cleaned them up for the families of deceased that are there. So are there any questions on this? Trustee Charles, you had your hand up?
I'm going to move.
Oh, go ahead.
I move to authorize the cemetery committee with assistance of Sharp Engineering to solicit requests for proposals for wall reconstruction at the Oxford Township Cemetery.
I have a motion by Trustee Charles, a second by Trustee Payne. Looks.
It's a perception, isn't it?
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, hearing none, the motion carried, and before any work is done, we bring that back for approval. Now we can get to item I, Substation Interview Room Upgrade Quotation Approval. Board members, back a few months ago, we came in and we found that our interview rooms in the Sheriff's Department Substation were insufficient when taking interview recordings to court. We got a bid from the Sheriff's Company to do this work. We went out and a second bid was brought in, about ten thousand dollars cheaper, but what we found through the Michigan, what is it, the M Coal? Come on up, Lieutenant Patterson, anyone stood up today?
Take him down to the room. Yes, I believe you're correct. I believe Sergeant Meza provided you with the information, and I'll be sure that with the board or not, but there's a legality to everything we do. Everything flows through, you know, the Detective Bureau there in the interviewing process. Everything we do, of course, needs to be, should be, and has to be legal. The required, there's legal requirements for doing these interviews that turn out to the letter of the law, we're done in the water. So what we found was the, as Supervisor Curtis stated, the bid was quoted that he could do the product, but he couldn't fulfill the need. So we, this, the case cracker that we're going with is used throughout the whole entire Oakland County, and pretty much everybody's going to that. And what our hope is, is to be uniform with them also, and with technology is the way it goes. Hopefully with our capital and technical services, we can, you know, expound on that and have it more useful for everybody as long as it's being legal as well.
Are there any questions for Lieutenant Patterson? Come on, let's get him in that room.
to the letter of the law, we're done in the water. So what we found was the, as you know Supervisor Curtis stated, the bid was quoted that he could do the product, but he couldn't fulfill the need. So we, this, the case cracker that we're going with is used throughout the whole entire Oakland County and pretty much everybody's going to that. And what our hope is, is to be uniform with them also and with technology is the way you know it goes. Hopefully with our capital technical services, we can, you know, expound on that and have it more useful for everybody as long as it's being legal as well.
Okay. Are there any questions for Lieutenant Patterson? Come on, let's get him in that room.
How about a demonstration with the supervisor?
I've had that. I move to approve the invoice from American Video Transplanting. It is February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three, the amount of twenty-four thousand five hundred fifty dollars to upgrade Oakland County Sheriff's Substation Interview Room. This twenty-four thousand five hundred fifty dollars, Montix B Expenses Police Contracting Fund, two oh seven, three oh two, nine seventy-six, point zero zero zero, additions and improvements.
Second, I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call. Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
We talked about this before.
The new pocket park coming in, maybe adding some more parking for folks maybe to come there and use the park with their little kids. So we got that park coming up right away, so we may add five, ten more spots.
That's, can we throw that in the bid gym? I mean, we don't have it in the estimate.
Take a little bit more effort because it'd have to be designed. This one's pretty straightforward as far as just a mill overlay, fix the cracks, that type of thing. You could put it in there, but I think it's gonna take up a lot of, you know, where the park is going in, or it's gonna take, there's not gonna be a lot of room for additional parking. We can look at it though, Joe.
Just in case kids wanna use it, you know, I'd rather have people be able to go over and park their vehicle and use that little park.
It's a good point. We are using the park, we are using the safety path. Daily we see, even in the snowy weather, we see people parking out here, getting out, taking their strollers out, other bikes out. And this is a five-mile circle through Waterstone and then to the village and back out here. So we can take a look at that.
Yeah, we can look at it.
Okay. Trustee Charles, you have a question?
This be ARPA eligible?
Well, that is up for debate. It is eligible for ARPA fund expenditure, correct, Attorney Allen?
It's a governmental service expenditure for on infrastructure, so yes. But it would be up to the ARPA committee to make that recommendation to them.
Right. And secondly, we have monies in our budget currently for some improvements, but after the fire alarm fiasco, we don't know how much we have left because we just finished it. So with that, I look for a motion.
I move to authorize a capital improvement committee with the assistance of Sharp Engineering to solicit requests for proposals for parking lot driveway improvements at Oxford Township Municipal Complex.
Second, I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Noel. We're jumping on this rather quickly because we are entering heavy bid seasons for these asphalt companies and we wanna get it done right away. So to that, roll call please, if there are no questions, I'm sorry. Roll call. Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Okay, last one. Item thirteen L, North Area Sanitary Sewer Special Assessment District Easement Acquisition. Board members, as you learned, we were working on acquiring an easement of some property on M twenty-four, the corner of Market Street, M twenty-four, highly traveled, highly utilized and commercial property. We offered the landowner a certain amount of money. That's a helicopter, I thought it was the internet, really. We offered them money to, one sewer happened in the beginning for five thousand. They know, they countered, we had it appraised, it came in at five thousand and one dollars.
One hundred dollars.
One hundred dollars. The counter offer was reduced by the applicant, or by the landowner, to fifteen thousand dollar counter offer. For all of the reasons we spoke of, China's of the essence with the sewer line in, going to court, going, paying his attorney bills, all this is charged against the SAD and the sewer costs borne by the developers, the landowners, this money would be taken out of that fund. We would pay it upfront and then we would get it back out of the SAD when the bills were filed out. So I look for a recommendation or motion. I make a motion after the owner of the Oxford Promenade I for the necessary sewer easement and amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. Second, I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Noel. I see a question to my left. Clerk Wright wants us to confirm the motion without a term.
We, actually, I would recommend an amendment to accept the offer of fifteen thousand dollars. We're not actually making the offer. The property owner has made the offer to Oxford fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay, so we're gonna vote this motion down.
Mm-hmm.
Roll call.[1170.33] Clerk Wright?
No.
Supervisor Curtis?
No.
Treasurer Ferrari?
No.
Supervisor, uh, Trustee Charles?
No.
Trustee Noel?
No.
Trustee Payne?
No.
And Trustee Coleman?
No.
There's a motion.
There is?
There is.
I didn't see it.
It's in my letter.
I was looking for it. I didn't see it.
Oh, I moved accept the offer of fifteen thousand dollars for the purchase of an easement from Oxford Promenade LLC for the purposes of construction and future maintenance of the Township's North Area Sanitary Sewer. Second, I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, the second by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call. Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
And Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Okay, we had no items removed from the consent agenda for item fourteen. Second portion, number fifteen, public comment. So are there any members of the public that want to comment? Sure, come on up. Say your name, you have three minutes to talk, and later we go.
My name's Janine Graham. I live at eight-two-one Cross Circle in Waterstone. I realized that, what I was coming here for was the conditional rezoning, just to hear that. I realize that's been going back now to the planning commission. One thing I wanted to note is that the conditional zoning, want to appreciate, or thank Trustee Noel for his direction for that, to process that conditional rezoning. So I don't know what the second reason of condition is, but that'll be interesting to see what that is. I know that my neighbors and I are concerned about the density of that particular project. I realize that we're not talking about the planning at this point, but I do want to bring that up right now. The, there are two parcels, one is north of Market Street, the other is south. The south does touch on to, you know, it's closer obviously to Waterstone Lake.
Yes.
And the density there is very concerning to all of us. Additionally, there is a pathway there that I believe Independence Village may have put in, but it's been there for quite some time. When talking to our other neighbors, it's something that is long, as they've been here twenty years, it's been there. And so we would like to see that continue, be grandfathered in and not be removed if that were to, if we were to go forward with the, the build. Additionally, the runoff that they are listing is acceptable to go into Waterstone Lake. To me, it's not acceptable. And the manners of, pardon me, manners of Westlake have a system that they used that for stormwater treatment chamber that I'd like to be considered for that when the planning does come up. But that's basically what I wanted to kind of iterate and just make sure we're addressing those concerns. And then in terms of the single waste hauler, I had a question in regards to was community disposal considered at all with them? We currently have them in our HOA. They've been wonderful, and we've had them for about three years. And I know they're a smaller, you know, company compared to the, at least two of the ones that you listed, but they, their costs and rates and their team, they're great. So I would highly recommend them if you haven't considered them yet. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you. Any other members of the community would like to discuss public comment at this time? Come on up.
Good evening. My name's Greg Graham. I also live in Waterstone on the lake. My wife just mentioned some of the concerns we have relative to the density, so I want to speak into that. And I know it's got to go into other planning procedures to figure out what the actual architecture will end up looking like, but I think what was proposed is, especially on the smaller parcel on the water side, is, is pretty much just overkill in my mind. If we're going to come up Market Street and twenty-four, soon as you crest the hill, that's what you see. And it doesn't, it doesn't, at least in the architectural renderings, it doesn't match anything that's in, in Waterstone currently. I know there's, there are condominiums and, and multifamily homes in that regard, but nothing with this, this style of homes like they, the old row houses that you would have in some of the old New England communities or things. So I just wanted to make a point that I think that it's, it's drastic change from the standard protocol of, of the design of the homes now. So I just wanted to bring that forth and, and make sure that's considered when we do get to that one of the, of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public like to address more?
Hi, my name is Alexandra Massey. I actually live in Waterstone as well. I came for thirteen A as well. So the parcel that's on the south side closer to Waterstone Lake, that is actually my neighbor. The backside of my house and the side is all windows, so right now you look out and you see, you know, the wooded area, we see deer and that's all I would see, would be like apartments, basically. I do worry about the sewer runoff. I have three kids, they're seven, five, and three. I don't like the idea of them literally going into the water where you have runoff coming directly from the end. I worry about privacy. You're not talking two homes that match the cohesiveness of the rest of the community. You're talking about ex amount of families moving in, and I don't like the idea of my kids being in the backyard and if I can see, you know, if I can see you, you can see me. And I know we're not talking about any of that right now. I know this is being sent for debate elsewhere, but moving forward, what does that mean as far as dates to like come back and express further concerns that way? Do you guys potentially know?
We'll try and address those comments in the commissioners' comments, we can't have the dialogue.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's why I'm writing over here.
But yeah, really, those are kind of my biggest concerns. You know, we moved in here four years ago, and we moved for the nature, the style of the community, the waterfront access, and I just, if I wanted to live across from apartments, I wouldn't have moved where I did. And I feel like something like that being erected there just kind of devalues the value of our home, and I don't want to uproot my kids. Like, we just, you know, they've established themselves in the, in the community and in the school district, and yeah, I'm making sense.
Okay, thank you. Any other members of the community who want to speak, public comment?
My name is Dana Lamazny. I live at six-two-one East Lake Trail. I am directly adjacent to the, on the parcels that is being proposed for rezoning and development. My biggest concern is, like my wife just mentioned, we moved here four years ago. We lived south of here, in the Combe area. We invested in Oakland County, we invested in Oxford specifically. Our home is a significant amount. We paid close to seven hundred thousand dollars for our home for lakefront access, to have that waterfront property, to enjoy that view and to share that community with people that also have the same priorities as us. Putting in forty-five units, it's not forty-five units, it's forty-five families that you're putting in, a whole neighborhood that is now directly across from us, and you're ripping out everything that we sought to invest in, and under the understanding that when we bought the land that this was a commercial use that hasn't been developed in twenty years and more than likely would either maintain somewhat of our privacy or not be developed. And I don't think that, and I speak on behalf of myself and my neighbors who've I spoken to in the community, our Waterstone community doesn't want this. We don't want that high density, especially next to another high density. I really hope the committee, committee puts value in what we've already invested into our homes. You know, as my wife mentioned, you know, we invested, we continue to invest in our property taxes, which are twelve thousand dollars to live in that lakefront access. I, again, am not going to continue to invest that if we're getting stripped from our privacy and everything else that we currently have. You have the power of your vote, and I ask all of you to please come to my house, six-two-one East Lake Trail. I will gladly accept you guys to see the view that I see, to share a glimpse of what catastrophic could happen to our homes on that lakefront. And the investment that not only I have placed in this community, but also my entire neighborhood, because my seven hundred thousand dollar home goes down, everybody in my entire neighborhood trickles down because of that. So, sorry. I appreciate your guys' time. I thank you for just hearing us out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Don Belisick, I live at five-six-nine South Shore Drive. I live on a corner of the street from Dan and Alex. My wife and I moved here in Troy. We raised our two kids, they're grown now. We lived there for twenty-five years. I work in Sterling Heights, nine-minute drive, or nine-mile drive. It's really nice. When our kids moved out, we felt we wanted to get out and find another community that had great amenities. We found Oxford. We looked at probably forty homes we walked through in a variety of communities in this area. Waterstone, we kept on coming back to it. We absolutely love it, the green space, the open space, the golf, the water, you name it. It's got it all. There's not many communities around here that have that. The density that we're talking about with this development is, it's nothing like what we have in that area. This developer is actually going to be profiting off of what we have already currently built. And I would just ask you to consider that when you look at them putting twenty-seven units on the north side of Water, I'm sorry, Market Street, there's going to be twenty-seven two-car garage doors lined up as we drive down that road. Way too dense. On the south side, as they were saying, eighteen buildings, I think they want to put on a two-point-six acre parcel. Again, way too dense, privacy issues, water access issues. It's going to be an absolute nightmare for our community. It's not why we moved here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the community that want to speak, public comment? Okay, seeing none? Let's move on to board of trustee comments. That was much. So can I go first tonight?
Cool.
Thanks. First off, our next meeting is April twelfth. It's going to be held at Lake Point Church on Dreamer Road at six-thirty P.M. And we're going to notice it to the public. We're going to all show up at six-thirty and move forward. Secondly, happy birthday, Chief Matt. You tried to sneak out, but no, Nash, didn't you?
Thank you.
Board members, we, we've received several contracts for suppliers in the township. Some of the contracts haven't been reviewed since two thousand five? What was that last one? It was twenty years. Anyway, it's gone up extremely. It's gone up appropriately with inflation, but it's above my board or my approval, and I'm not going to spread it out amongst the three of us. We have our Carlyle Warpman, we have our IT Wright. That's a supplier. Oh, yeah, consultants. Oh, suppliers. Consultants. End words. I'm going to have to probably bring this back to the board, but in the past, we've sought out bids to justify the cost of our suppliers. I, I don't know if I need approval to send out for bid, just to show you where we're at, and then justify retaining the consultants we have? Or do I make this agenda item for April to get approval to go out to bid? Procedurally?
Procedurally, it's up to the contracts you have with your consultants regarding whether you need to go out to bid this year or not. So we need to review your contracts, but you can send it to the, plan to send it to the board for consideration if it's a requirement under your existing contracts.
Okay. So right now, we have two contracts that are increased in price significantly. Should I bring those to the board next month and have them approve that, or tell me to go out and rebid them?
So if your contracts say allow for increases without board approval, you follow the contract. If your contracts state that you need board approval, you need to bring it back. So what we can do is review them, and I can advise accordingly.
Okay. But currently, right now, times are catching up with us.
We're not allowed to talk to you.
Yes, you are.
During board member comments?
During board member comments, they can talk to me, can't they?
Well, you're the chair, so you can call them, I'm technically.
Yes, she can talk. We don't want to. We're not, we're not, um, we're affecting cost savings.
Yes.
Or abiding by contracts according to our bylaws. So if you suggest to me that we review these by going out to bid, I will do that.
Let me review them with Brittany, come back with a recommendation.
Okay, that's what I'll do. Mr. Chair? Yes, sir.
Just a comment, how are we operating currently for every past the first quarter?
We haven't been built for new contract hours yet because it takes time enough.
March first, I think it was?
Yeah.
Yes. So I will do that. Brittany?
Okay.
I have that. Thirdly, we heard tonight from a citizen about a traffic study on M twenty-four. I'll take that assignment on. Traffic studies are not done in the winter by M dot or Oakland County Road Commission, Road, Road Commission, Oakland County. Their tire counters are tore up by the plows, their machines are susceptible to the weather. So the spring is upon us. I will take that on to follow up on the traffic study on Lapier Road. Secondly, we had some comments brought forward tonight. We did move the conditional rezoning back to the planning commission, where there will be a public hearing for these comments. Not knowing the completeness of what was offered in the change to that zoning, it'll be brought out for a public hearing at that time. As far as water treatment, normally our engineer, when it gets down to site construction, we mentioned water treatment for the Westlake, manners of Westlake that was installed would probably be done. It's, I know it's done every lake that we do developments around, but those items will all be discussed at the planning commission. Community disposal, John? You had three people bid, community didn't bid? Let me get to those notes. No, community not bid, to answer your direct question. Subject came up this afternoon, and I did a little research on that with our consultant. And what we found was, we went out on the mitten process, and for those of you who don't know what that is, it's a purchasing group that connects thousands of buyers from local Michigan government agencies and provides a bid notification system that gives vendors instant access to bids, RFPs, and quotes. That is a known system that's out to the general population of, of consultants. When we researched this, there was no evidence that this particular company name was researching that or responded to any participation in that. We got on the Internet and looked up the company's name, and the company doesn't participate in community-wide trash hauler services that we found. Now, we could be wrong, but again, this was late in the day. And just, our consultant went in a preliminary investigation and found no records of his sources, that are RFPs that have been submitted by them to do a community-wide service. Excuse me, I'm, thank you. That's about all I had on that, but we did investigate that concern that we might have had an oversight. I don't believe we had an oversight, it was all published, all published to the public through the mitten system, as well as the, our contractors sent out quotes, or RFPs to, to business of the East Lake, you need to business of. Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to start to do this. Was it Women's Day or Ladies' Day?
I think so.
What?
Well, it is both. It is both Women's Month and International Women's Day.
So start with Catherine. Catherine, do you have any comment?
I'm a member of the public, so if some women and women know how they feel, then first, thank you.
Trustee Payne?
I think we get a major, well, a four-hundred-and-sixty-one-page agenda, so that's it, that's all I have. I won't be very next one.
All right, please. That it?
Yeah.
Trustee Noel? Make it short, long, make it short. We had a community event this morning, a breakfast at the Waterstone. We heard from Mr. Curtis and Joe Mador, some of the leaders of our, of our community, and they all live for, for Oxford Township, the village, working together. It was a great gathering, a lot of people were there. There was a young man that took an award for twenty-twenty-three. You have to help me with this, Mr. CJ. Excuse me, Mr. Curtis, can I ask CJ a leadership award? Leadership award, thank you. He has helped raise over nine-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollars for the community in his work since starting in two, November twenty-nineteen. So I want to thank you for that. It was recognized, he got a nice little plaque to put on his office wall, he looks good. And it's his wife's birthday today. Thank you. Treasurer Ferrari?
Oh, board members, just an update with the rising investment rate. We changed around, but the board's approved the investment policy. We changed some different investments from November first until today's date for all the various township funds. We burned three-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars in interest.
Last month?
For the, from November first till, make, March seventh. So, I mean, general fund itself is up a hundred thousand dollars, please sixty. I mean, just, right now, this isn't going to last forever, but this is a kind of a nice wave we've been on, so we're over, we're probably, I'm thinking by the mid-year, we have about five hundred thousand dollars in just interest. That's all I have.
Clerk Wright?
Just want to let the general public know, and also the board, that Polyatt Trail is going to have a public input meeting on the sixteenth of March, and the purpose of that is to gather information because we're trying to get some grants, and this is one of the stuff that is required for us to qualify to try to get some monies. We're, we operate on an eighty-thousand-dollar budget, so it's pretty tight for ranging sixteen-point-nine miles, so if you can, if you can participate in that, it's at the Friendship Park from five o'clock to six-thirty. That's an orient township right on Baldwin Road, I believe, of this. And if you can't attend, there is a website, too, you can go to, fill out the survey, it's on there, so, those are my comments, thank you.
Trustee Charles? You save the best for last.
Absolutely. Good way to get your pop, cans, your bottles, along with my friend over here who was with the Polyatt Trail, the Oxeras and Use Association, is doing bottle drive, can drive, if you want to drop those things off over at the Village Police Department, and then we take on wires and cash it, and it adds to the cause that Mr. Wright was just discussing. Doc, walk, we'll get rid of them for you. That's it.
I'll make a motion with adjourned.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Charles. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, let's move on.